We're live. All right, we'll call the meeting to order at nine oh eight. Uh, everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. And, uh, we're doing roll call. Uh, Mayor Motors here, Trustee Wolf here, Trustee Smith here, and Trustee Crawford here. And then, uh, Gene is not present, um, and of course, uh, our clerk.
Here.
And our attorney.
Present. Was Mr. Patterson's resignation letter read in the meeting yet?
No.
Maybe you want to mention that.
Will do. And then also, uh, Trustee Patterson resigned. Uh, let's see here. Written up the letter that he sent to the board. And then who's in the email, so I don't have to go and try to start again. Not gonna do that. All right, uh, let's see here.
It was probably the new one.
I believe it was, yeah.
On the twenty-second.
The twenty-second is correct. Gotta do that, yes.
Yeah. Some people like to put their parties upside down around here, can you have it off?
Oh, it's a, it's a fun experience. All right, um, so, uh, Trustee Patterson submitted his resignation, uh, back on the twenty-second. Um, and the letter that he wrote to the board addressed gentlemen, in the past weeks, we have each faced many challenges in our holes as trustees for this village. Three of you were thrown into this process mid-course, and I feel that you have stepped into this role and are attending to your duties very well. I know that I am, I know that when I ran for election, I promised each and every person that I talked to that I would always operate for the best interests of the village and mine. I know that each of you feel the same way and are always on, or excuse me. I know that each of you feel the same way and are, and are always of that mindset. It is with the statement in mind that I must submit to you this letter of resignation. Given the condition of our village at this time and the combination of problems that we have faced, I no longer feel that my being trustee is the best for this village. Therefore, effective at noon today, I am resigning from my position. I understand that this may not be a popular decision with some of you and with some voters. At the conclusion of the counting of votes for the March election, I did in fact have the most accumulated votes of any of the candidates. With this in mind, I hope that the voters will understand that I take that fact very seriously and still hope they have confidence in my decisions. As you four continue on, the board, I urge you to maintain the enthusiasm and persistence that I have seen out of each of you so far. I am proud to have served with you even for just a short time. Best regards, Thomas Patterson. And so, we, the board, would like to thank Tom for his service and all the time and effort that he put into it. Uh, also sent, uh, we'll be sending out a letter, uh, or did we already send out a letter, Rose? Already sent out a letter to all of the previous trustees, um, that have resigned to thank them for their service and for their diligence and everything that they've done for the village. So, the positions that we need to fill with Trustee Patterson's resignation, uh, first one would be Deputy Mayor. Uh, so I will extend that to Bo. You accept the position of Deputy Mayor?
Yes, sir, I will.
Okay, uh, what else was Tom over? He was...
I didn't grab that because I didn't know you were doing that.
Uh, I know he was over the Police Department with me. Pretty sure. I think that was really the only other thing that he, everything else I believe was with the board, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't have the, the organizational meeting minutes with me.
I do. Uh, do you have any kind of dig into those? Because I know things changed after the organizational meeting. Did you change any of this media appointments from the original position?
No, he stayed the same and you just added the, the new trustees.
Added the new trustees and took those positions. And I believe, the only thing is, is that Tom was on...
Planning?
He was on planning and zoning.
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, you don't have to... Um, when was that? Were Jason and Bo served office?
April twenty-first and twenty-second.
So next one we did, uh...
I think her first one was April...
Yeah, I think it was twenty-first and twenty-second. I think Jason and Bo were the twenty-first and I think Wirt was the twenty-second.
Do you know when we were done at the... Is what meeting was that we covered everything? We had an emergency meeting, we were out.
We would have done it on the twenty-sixth.
We would have done it, yeah, the work session, April twenty-seventh.
And you had sent out the... Village minutes, fourth, twenty-seventh, boom. All right, um...
I just have plenty.
Oh, here we go. All right, uh, so... Planning and zoning, we had with, uh, Bo. And... I think that was...
And Parks and Forest, we're done with that.
And the Police Department is what he lives with me on.
I showed that on the organizational minutes, yeah, from the equal six, but that's all I have on these.
Uh, planning and zoning and, uh, the Police Department. So right now, it's just Bo on the planning and zoning. Um, either of you two be, for the time being, be willing to do, join Bo on the planning and zoning whenever they actually call me.
Next meeting for joint planning is June tenth. And zoning board appeals is having a hearing coming up. I'm trying to schedule it with the chairman.
So, because how often do they meet?
Zoning is on an as-needed basis. Joint planning is trying to meet every month.
Well, if you have two on top of it and say someone's unable to attend, you'd be able to do that in a four?
If you can't, might as well use the whole of us.
Okay, so who will join him then at maybe the planning and zoning?
Who will back him if he can't make it, you mean?
Yeah.
He said, Jason's saying either or in case I can't make it.
Yeah, but just so that somebody else is there.
Yeah, I mean, one whistle, Bo, if he can't make it, one whistle, Bo. Right, Bo, or Wirt.
Yeah.
Do you want to make that a board?
I guess we can make it a board.
Maybe, and that way, if one of you attends, you have representation there.
Yeah.
We got a pretty full plate, that's already announced, yeah.
We all got a pretty full plate. You guys are pretty, yeah. Um, and then for the Police Department, either of you guys want to join me with the Police Department?
Yeah.
I can back to anybody, but like I said, I mean, if somebody can't make it, like...
All right, so Bo will join me on the Police Department then, which we meet once a month right now with, uh, Parthi and sometimes the officers, so I'll let you know whatever works. It's usually in the evening, so it goes along with our schedule, so that should be fine. So I believe that's everything that we had for Tom that we had to cover. Okay, so... For old business, the proposed zoning law amendment, we still have to wait until the Joint Planning Board meets for props. So that's continuing to be tabled. Uh, the proposed water law, um, everybody received that, uh, from Rose, correct?
Yeah.
Has anybody had a chance to read the whole thing?
No. Not the whole thing, um, there was something I seen on there, highlighted it.
Look at his, see, we'll comment on his final stills too, huh? How about that?
But he has, he has folders.
I do too. I have, you know I do, I have a ton of them.
There was something on the water.
One of those years or something like that.
Yeah, this is for the...
The water law is the big...
Well, do we need to go into it now or should we wait until our...
Well, everybody needs to read it. And also, are we gonna need to hold a hearing for it?
Work in your right hand, the bottom thing with the binder clip?
The new one that's proposed.
No, that's some noise.
Yeah, why does the old water law and the one that was adopted in Paris, for two thousand and ten?
Do we want to have like a, a special meeting in regards to the water law and then...
You'll need to have a hearing.
And I can't have it in a regular meeting, but if you want to have a special, you can.
Right. Um, but you can't have the hearing until the water law is final and you're, you're all happy with it and it's good go.
And then you propose a notice in the paper.
Right.
And you wait a specific period of time, then you have the hearing. And at that hearing, you listen to any comments from the public and then choose whether or not you're going to adopt the water law as it's been finalized.
Does anybody...
If you make changes, we have to start the whole thing over again.
Effectively, June first of two thousand and fourteen, this is the proposed, correct?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, the only thing I made it to like money, something, or... The one thing I did see is just connection to the water, public water supply. Any person or entity with the village's main water line available to the premises has determined by the superintendent to access this main water line in accordance with prevailing village ordinances.
Okay.
That's from the old? Is that just straight from the old?
No, that's probably, that's probably from the allocateville one. They basically took allocateville and then adjusted to make it fit Catararas.
Well, I was thinking on there is it should say something about a base setting of more approval, right?
For people to tap in?
Yeah.
You generally want people to tap in without word approval because you want to encourage the largest number of users possible. So if they're already adjacent to a main, which is what it says in the document there, you want to get as many users on the system in the village as possible. I'm not saying that if the board wanted to have that as approval, that it's inappropriate, you could wish, but...
It wouldn't be inappropriate to decline people from public water?
It's... I just don't understand why the superintendent is the person that they can hold up for the...
Because he's the one that schedules and, and does...
As DPDW.
It shouldn't be a discretionary decision, if that's what you're saying. No, it shouldn't be at the discretion of the board, but if the board was being provided with notice and couldn't tap in without that, that, but even that, it's still not something that we wouldn't want set up that way. You, the way the law says it, letting the DPDW supervise would be the one who decides whether or not it gets tapped in, it becomes just a discretionary decision as to how far somebody is from the main. And the old water law has standard. You have to get so many pounds of pressure and you have to have lines that are no more than thirty feet from the access point. And the similar standard would probably exist to make sure that people get sufficient pressure. But other than that, we want as many people accessing the system as possible in the village.
Yeah.
And you only want to limit the number of people outside the village to the extent that it prevents people inside the village getting enough water pressure.
That makes sense.
Yeah. In fact, state law requires that if there's too many people outside the village accessing it, they can't be given more access and people inside the village have to be in preference.
Is, um, I mean, is, is that eight too early for us to review the water law? For everybody to have a chance to read it and bring up any questions? Make any changes? That way, we can do everything that Mr. Frank said in regards to having the hearing and letting the public know? I mean, is the eighth too short? Is everybody gonna give that?
Yes, I think I need ten days for, for a hearing.
Well, we're not having a hearing.
No, no, just to read their final notes, just schedule the hearing.
And then to schedule the hearing and all of that. But for everybody to have time to review it and bring questions and everything, but that's on, I mean, we need to really...
Do you want to wait and see how far you get into new business?
Um, well, if we always need to, we can always add a...
I mean, it could be added to the agenda on the eighth. You know, it, it'll actually be on the agenda because it's old business.
Right, um...
Yeah, if it's already on the agenda, it's old business. If we're prepared, we can talk about that.
Okay, that should be good. And then hopefully, we can schedule the hearing to all of that. So that would be a top priority for us all to review for the eighth. All right, and then another old business is community picnic. You know, I spoke with Kami and Sis a little bit in regards to what's going on. And then we received a letter from, who was it? Bobby Joe, uh, Kami and all of them. Would anybody be opposed to having them come in on the eighth and be able to discuss formally, say maybe for fifteen minutes, discuss what we want to do, what we can do, and... And what, well, what the village can do as far as the service.
All right, that'd be nice.
And have it be formal and that everybody knows exactly what's truly going on and then just say, okay, yeah, this is what we're gonna do and then, okay, so...
Pretty mad ladies, if you don't want to be in the room.
Well, this, the community picnic, then, what we were talking about, maybe you want, um, the fire hydrant painting?
Yeah, fire hydrant painting, um, having the police there, um... Have poss, I know Tom talked about something about having like a dunk tank or something. I believe though that they might already have a, I think that they are, they themselves are working on that.
I know, I've, I've talked to one business in town and they said that they, they would, uh, donate something as far as, you know, the painting of fire hydrants. We do, you know, get the kids involved with the painting of fire hydrants. I believe the only pink color they have to use is whatever the top color of the hydrant is. So if anybody visits any of the businesses around the area in the village, you know, you want to ask them if they're willing to donate something. Ain't gotta be nothing spectacular, you know, just something for the kids, you know? Get the, get the kids to, maybe paint up a fire hydrant, stuff, dogs or whatever.
So we can discuss all of that then?
Yeah.
Come the eighth and, uh, Rose, we be able to get in contact with Kami and Sis Kay in regards to that?
Yes.
Thank you much. And then we'll take care of that and also, if you could actually listen on the agenda, is something first of that, we can talk to them and get them in and out of here so they're not here for such a short period of time?
Yeah, they'd be under the visitors' public comment time.
Okay. Um, so for new business, uh, senior building key, Historical Society?
Um, that's, that's from me. I, um, have been working with the Historical Society on getting them access into the senior building when they have their meetings.
Okay.
They historically have met every other month, but they've been meeting every month while they're trying to get things up and moving. Um, they've been coming to see me to get the key and then they drop it back off to me and I was just wondering if it was possible to allow them to have a key to the senior building. Um, Laura Land was gonna contact Bob Wade and see if he already has a key. If he has a key, it's kind of a moot point because historically, they've had access to the building when they have a meeting and they just, they're all good. But if he doesn't have a key, I was wondering if the board had any problem with me providing one to the lands for them to access the senior building on their meeting night.
I don't see why they should use the senior building. Do we need to pass a resolution for that?
Uh, no, I don't think you need a resolution, but I just, I'll put it in the minutes that you've approved them to have a key if the Historical Society is not already in possession of one.
Well, there probably should be at least a motion and second. Just, I don't know, just to acknowledge that there is a...
So the Historic Society... That was my answer. The Historic Society, historically, does not have a key to the historical building. That is a ton of push there there.
Just checking to see if you're willing.
All right, so can I get a motion to have we allow the Historical Society to have a key for the senior building?
I'll make it. I'll sign it. All right.
Jason, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimously carried and approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, next up is police car maintenance. Um, we did receive a quote from both, um, so what's your business call?
Village.
Auto?
Just Village Auto?
I think so.
Okay, so we received a quote from Village Auto and also from...
Scott Street Auto?
Yeah.
Scott Street Auto, which were the same. I would like to utilize both businesses for the police car. I would like to see if we could do maintenance, standard maintenance, which should probably be every three thousand miles, uh, through Scott Street Auto and then if we could do, um, repairs, such as vehicle repairs and tires at, uh, at the Village Auto. Does anybody have any issues with that? So we're utilizing both and both are able to, it seems pretty fair and equal that we're utilizing both and it's not just one way or the other?
It's all target to me, I guess, it's all right, you know, we're using both.
Yeah.
There's, the only question will the bodywork? When it comes to the bodywork, are we gonna, if we get a estimate, obviously insurance company gonna be able to tell us? We can't take anything. I don't think that, it's just very short.
No, we should be able to take who we choose, right?
Yeah, I think they really have taken it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's, that's...
I would say so. All right, so can I have a motion that will utilize Scott Street Auto for regular maintenance and stuff like that? And then a, um, and also for, uh, Vile, Village Auto, uh, to handle bodywork and tires for the village equip, or for the police car maintenance? Can I have a motion for that?
Oh.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, carried and approved.
So Scott Street's doing standard maintenance such as oil and mechanical repairs?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then body repairs and tires are through Village Auto?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Warranty work will still have to go to the dealer, but...
Right.
So, and next up is the Alford Beck easement.
Yes, uh, the board granted easement to a subject to him getting insurance. He brought an insurance binder to me that shows that he has an extra point three three acres attached to his current property insurance. I thought that that would be satisfactory. Anticipating that the board would consider it satisfactory, I drafted a proposed easement. I sent this, a digital copy email this morning. If you want to look at it more thoroughly and I'll spend just a second to read what it says. Typically, easement of law is, it can be done with any number of things, but a deed works. And all it has to do is describe what the estate that the board is given the right to access to and then the one that gets trampled over, the surveying estate. So you describe the dominant and the surveying estate, you describe whatever the right is, and then you describe affairs ain't right in terms of how it gets passed in the future. So this describes the dominant estate, the one that gets to own the right, as Mr. Alford Beck's liking. It describes the surveying estate as the village's triangle of land for him to get access in and out. And it says that it will pass with the property, not with Mr. Alford Beck. And it goes with the property so that when he goes to build something on it, if he goes to sell the property, whoever buys that house can still get in and out of the house in the future and doesn't become landlocked. I also put in the, the requirement that whoever owns the property will be required to have insurance on that parcel, I'm sorry, on the extra point three three acres. And then if anybody gets injured on the point three three acres and they're there in order to access the, the house, that whoever owns the house at the time is the one who's liable for that injury. And so hopefully they're carrying insurance for it.
Okay.
I wrote up a sample resolution, if the board wanted to adopt this, that will also grant the mayor authority to sign the deed so that it can be reported by Mr. Alford Beck. And do you want me to show you the sample resolution?
Um, we actually all have one, do we not?
Yeah.
When was the last survey done, Liam?
Do you, do you have this one? The one that I just, is this the one that was sent out this morning or is that an older one?
No, I, this is what was...
This was sent out this morning, I copied it to the board.
Fantastic, thank you. What was the question, I'm sorry?
Oh, I was asking whether the last survey was done on that village.
There was a survey...
On the village?
Property there, the point three three.
I don't know.
The point three three was what was surveyed by Mr. Alford Beck that he brought the survey map for. And what he had surveyed was the boundary line between his property here and the village over here in their land. Though the survey itself notes that the surveyor believed that whoever was occupying Jason's land before already had use and access to this triangle. And in order for this to actually be reported properly, the easement, the description of the land says it will come with a copy of the survey map. I only have an unofficial copy, that's kind of sort of copying a little bit oddly, uh, that shows the parcel. So, Mr. Alford Beck, we're gonna have to get an extra certified copy from the surveyor in order to make sure it gets reported properly.
So Jason had art, art properties in there?
Uh, it's a boundary between his property and the village's property.
Correct.
So the line was surveyed. And the line surveyed, and the surveyor looked for rebar in order to indicate exactly where the boundary was for what was the road and how much past the road should have been village property and how much past it should have been his.
Yeah, and there's the point three three there.
This is the village's triangle right here.
That's what I'm saying, we need it.
Probably have that survey, go where our...
My understanding is that that's what this survey says.
That's what that survey already does, it already states that that's a village property. He's just asking access for that.
So you're saying they would have had to go off of art markers?
And so we start, and if you look at the survey map, and I'm happy to have anybody with a copy that somebody did get a copy, it actually has, the dark circles are rebar markers that were already in place. And the white circles are three-quarter rebar markers that were put in by the surveyor when he did the survey, including along the lines for what we had for the village's...
You've got this wrote up so that the easement stays with the property and not the property owner?
Yeah, well, no, no, property owner as opposed to Mr. Alford Beck personally. So he sells the land, goes to the buyer, as opposed to he sells the land, it doesn't stay with him. It's not like he has a...
No, no, that's what I'm saying, it stays with the property, not the owner.
Not with the current owner. It'll always be for the owner of that property, whether it's Mr. Alford Beck.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, he can't just go to the grocery mall off the street and...
So what happens, what happens if we need to do something? I got thinking about this.
It's a non-exclusive right for him to access and use the land.
Well, no, what I was gonna say is what happens if for some reason, we need to change the outlook of our property the way it's set right now? And we need to move that road that he uses to get down in there?
Yeah.
How did, how would that work? You know what I mean? If, say we had to go in the other side or something?
You would have to do it with this agreement. You'd have to obtain either visitor, whoever the property owner is, is approval or obtain some plan for them to continue to get access in and out of their house. Whether it's through that exact piece of land or you transfer it on a different right somewhere else in order to let them get in and out, in order to establish their right there.
Now, what if the village went to sell that property?
Then the village, whoever they sell it to, is subject to... Yes. Once it gets reported, that's what the deed does. In fact, we saw an interesting deed from Mr. Wallace when he came in. The land's above, I can't remember if it's Kenyon Springs or the other spring. Somebody has a bunch of cows in the pasture above it, but it...
Oh, that's, uh, and it is Kenyon Springs.
Yeah, about a hundred years ago, somebody wrote it in and said, the village gets to keep the right in order to exclude any animals. And that has, I'm not sur- sure how that's been enforced over time, but the village, at least on paper, has a right to prevent those cows from being there, moving in the village's water supply. And if it's been exercised, that right to keep them out long enough, then the village might choose to exercise that right now while the person who owns that land is going through bankruptcy and before the village shows to buy that property. But anyway, that's the point of the deed is so that whoever owns the piece of land that the village owns in the future has to let people in and out. Whoever owns what's now Jason's land that he's intending to finish building a house on, whoever owns that house gets access to be, get in and out of their house in the future. That's the goal of the easement.
Does anybody talk to the town owner, they're going to, is there any improvements out there with the road or anything? Or are they, or...
Yeah, just, what, what, what comes along with this now that we've granted this easement? Does the town have to maintain that section? Or does that just give us...
It's a town road.
It's town road, but my understanding is the village maintains it.
Because we go down there and plow?
Because they need to go down and have a turnaround.
So they turn around where the, where people take their debris? That's right where they turn around.
So as long as they have to go down there and turn around, they just plow while they're down there?
Right.
That's my understanding.
To the, to the open and the trees, they don't actually plow this driveway, right?
No.
Or that roadway?
No, because it's not our responsibility to do such, no.
I thought, I thought the, I thought that's what they told us when we ran the easement, that we didn't have to reinvent it. Because it wasn't town road.
We don't, but for, for whoever, our DPDW would plow North Franklin, they would have to turn around.
I'm maintaining as far as like improvements or whatever.
No, we don't, it's not our responsibility.
No, you just plow it.
We just plow it because we have nowhere else to turn around. So that's how that's been done. So there's no responsibility for the roadway for the village whatsoever.
Except of course, if the village owns that, we'll plow it.
That's why I wondered if we should have our own survey, you know, Mr. Makeer. I mean, I didn't realize, I thought, I thought the survey...
If you want, though, just so you know, surveyors...
Aren't cheap.
Yeah, it's gonna be a couple grand in order to get it surveyed. You could probably get it done a little bit cheaper if somebody wanted to have a village deal. And the surveyor, whoever you use, is gonna go in and look at the markers that were set and hopefully use the same, uh, public records.
Why? Because I didn't realize at the time, he had to survey down the car progress.
Well, because it's...
And so, who was the guy that did it?
Uh, so on the back of the survey...
I'm sure he certified to do that.
Uh, Daniel Barry Land Surveyor, licensed in New York, Pennsylvania, from Lakeview, New York.
I said, I was, I thought that that was the survey of Jason's property.
Well, they gotta, they gotta go off of markers from ours to get the adjacent, you know, I mean... markers from ours to get the adjacent, you know, I mean, the, the adjacent one property, I guess.
Alright, so, where we're at, I'll just need a motion to grant easement requested by Jason Offerback, and give authority to the mayor to sign easement. Do I have a motion for that?
Yeah.
Second?
I'll say it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, carried and approved. That's done. What's next on the list? Um, I did send everybody an email in regards to the Pat McGee Trail Waterline Easement. Uh, I spoke with Mr. Fever, um, and he was willing, very graciously, as something for the village, to grant us an easement from Cali Summit to go across to, um, for the Pat McGee Trail, which pretty much follows the railroad. And, um, I believe that's also where the transmission lines fall along for all that. For us to, um, grant us an easement from there, all the way into the village, and then also all the way from Cali Summit to Little Valley, in case if there was ever an issue, um, that happened back in the nineteen nineties. Uh, I believe what I discussed with Mr. Fever is he would be willing to extend that for, that easement for about like three hundred and fifty dollars. I will confirm that with him. Um, but we will need to draft something up for that easement.
Typically, whoever wants easements, the one who drafts it up can be proposed, the way I, of course, did draft this easement between us and Mr. Offerback. If they can get me, I will be a legal description of the property that they're granting the easement to, so that'll be the area along Pat McGee Trail. And what they intend to use to do.
So, his property that we're talking about only gets us from the summit to the, the trail.
And then from the trail all the way into the village, and then from the trail all the way to Little Valley.
So.
Who's the owner of going for Pat McGee Trail?
He has the, he owns.
He owns that whole trail?
Is it him, or is it CLDC?
CLDC, and he is willing to, I believe it's, actually, don't quote me on that, I'm not sure if it's him personally or the organization. Either way, he, if it's him personally, or if it's the organization that he leads.
Right.
Is willing to offer that to the village graciously, so that if we ever run into a water issue.
Maybe we oughta have, see if he can come out and, and just, you know, we could talk, talk to him about it. That way, we all are ducks on our own.
Um, so, we will have that table for the June eighth meeting.
Okay.
Um, I know that Mr. Fever did reach out to the previous board before in regards to this, and I know other issues came up. But this is something that if we can get done before, if God forbid that ever gets sold, and we have access to it, that would be a lot of help for the village. So, Rose, could you remind me, uh, excuse me, to get in contact with Mr. Fever, and see if he can join us for the eighth meeting as well?
Okay, you're gonna contact him?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, we've already gone through four things.
Alright, uh, next up is policies. So, there's a few, um, that we still need to go over. Ones that will be tabled will be cellphone, computer, vehicle use. Uh, I've yet to propose anything for that as of yet. Um, what I did send out to everybody via email, um, was in regards to the hiring policy, your hiring process that we have. Um, so just to go over and then take your guys' comments, um, is that, for one, a position the village is hiring for my, uh, first must be announced in public meaning, um, and then the village, second, the village must post hiring advertisements in local papers, which include the Onlyan Times and the Wana News. We took off the cell make a press, the cost, but as we know, most of our, uh, mostly everybody utilized or reads the Wana News. I don't really really read Onlyan Times, but, but they're our newspaper that we report everything to, so that's why they're included. Uh, number three, the village must give two weeks from when advertisement is posted for applicants to submit their application along with resume. Number four, the advertisement must include the last date for filing an application and resume. Uh, number five, interviews will be conducted the week following the close date of filing applications and resumes from the advertisement in local papers. Uh, number six, every applicant gets the opportunity to have an interview with the whole board, which will be conducted and conducted in executive session. Uh, number seven, the mayor chooses the applicant to be hired and the board approves or disapproves the applicant. Uh, number eight, for supervisory positions, the village chooses to promote within, if possible, first, then prefer to hire from village applicants, second, then prefer to town, New Albion applicants, third, and then prefer to county applicants, lastly. Number nine, for unsupervisory positions, the village chooses to hire from village applicants, first, then prefer to town, New Albion applicants, second, and then prefer to county applicants, lastly. Uh, is there any issues with what I gave you guys and how it all looks? I think the timeframes are pretty appropriate.
With, uh, their application and resume?
Yeah.
Do we need, uh, to see proof of experience or proof of certifications, any of that?
Um. I mean, if there's something in the resume, there are any certificates that they have, which are a page that would be consumed, they would submit that one with it?
As what, have you require a proof versus whether or not the board takes it by themselves to look into, because resumes is a regular discussion.
The thing is, I mean, we're all busy. I mean, if they provide us proof of, you know, do some of the light work, it might take some.
I think that's a good idea.
You let it indicate what you need, so the people know that there's some.
Yeah.
So.
And certification.
So.
Yeah, your experience, time, and stuff, you know.
So, I'll never forget.
Did you, there is a employment processing thing in the village handbook that I know you all
Yeah.
appreciate. Um, did you wanna incorporate anything from this in the new hiring policy? Not at all?
Not from what I reviewed, no.
Okay.
Think this is pretty straightforward, very cut and dry, that there's no misinterpretation for how.
Yeah.
Um, but you would like to include, where is it, to submit their application along with resume and certifications?
Sir, proof of certifications and experience?
Their application should list their experience, cause we use service applications.
Our certification, huh?
And proof of certifications.
Is that number three?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Proof of certifications, if applicable.
Yeah, but they were, you know, certified earlier.
Was it gotten certifications slash licenses?
Okay, oh, so like the CBLs?
Yeah.
So, for a copy of your license.
Okay, that works. Um, so we'll just change line item three, then to include and proof of certifications and licenses if applicable. Um, is there any, is that it?
These are all two, whatever else.
Good. Okay. Um, can I have a motion to pass the village cataract's hiring process that we just went over?
Make the motion.
I'll say it.
Where it made the motion, Jason seconded it, if you're there, I'm sorry. No. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, carried and approved.
And you took and cell make a press off too.
I took cell make a presses off, yes. Uh, to save a line. Um, and I did say that cellphone, computer, and vehicle use policies will be, um, probably in our forum session next month. I'll go over samples and compile together and submit to you guys beforehand, so you can have your input, and then hopefully we can pass those to policies, um, next month. Uh, next up was, uh, position for water operator job specifications, um, that we went over when we had our meeting with Mr. Wolers and Mr. Proffler, Dr. Proffler, I should say. Um, I sent this to you guys, I don't know if everybody was able to, uh, read it. Essentially, this is gonna be the ad for the water treatment plant operator training position that we are needing. Um, and also in regards to, and I'll read it, and if there's anything, any issues or anything that anybody has an issue with, um, to go over with it. This essentially would be our ad. A lot of this comes from civil service. We might have to cut it down, so it helps with cost. So, Rose, I will need your.
This is easily a five or six hundred dollar ad.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Um, so I don't know if maybe responsibilities and all of that will need to be.
In the ad versus see the village hall posting it.
Right.
Right, I can, I can have this definitely printed out, we can do like we did when we hired Cory, in that it's a, it's a much briefer advertisement and informing people to come to the village hall to pick up a copy of responsibilities, a full, you know.
Three.
I know this is gonna sound odd, but I would recommend the village post it where they can post it freely as well, like Craigslist or somewhere online. People do look at job postings there, you want to have the widest applicant pool possible.
Uh, indeed.
Indeed. Indeed, yeah.
That's indeed. I'm sorry.
I'll do those for us, I know that we had, uh, applied for stuff like that, right? Um, so I'm gonna just read this as quickly as possible, just, I think, I pretty much covered everything in it, um, based off going what advertisements by other municipalities have listed for the same position, also what the village requirements are and needs, and civil service. Um, so, starting out in, and Rose, if you could, um, somehow think of what we, where we can cut so that this is smaller, and what should be included or not as well, um, Mr. France can go over this. Um, so, just to get right through it. Uh, Village Cataracts is now accepting applications for the position of water treatment plant operator training, which candidates are selected on the basis of general intelligence, basic knowledge of elementary chemistry, and general science, and mechanical and technol- technological aptitude. Term of hiring is limited to six months, during which time employees are required to satisfactorily, satisfactorily complete the training and experience requirements of the New York State Sanitary Code for a certificate appropriate to the plant, which is a two-way license. This position reports directly to the interim water advisor, uh, DPW superintendent, and the mayor of the village of Cataracts. General statement of duties includes undergoes on-the-job training to become qualified as an operator of a water treatment plant, assists in the operation and maintenance of a water treatment plant, does related work as required. This is a training position involving responsibility for learning the duties and routines in the operation and maintenance of a water treatment plant. The work is performed under immediate supervision of the interim water advisor. Uh, responsibilities includes, uh, perform study and reading assignments, observes demonstrations, and otherwise learns the techniques of operation and maintenance of a water treatment plant, learns and assists in the operation and adjustment of pumps, valves, and related mechanical and technological equipment, learns and assists in the inspection, maintenance, and repair of pumps, valves, and related mechanical and technological equipment, learns and assists in the making of physical tests of water for color, odor, and taste, learns and assists in the making of, uh, chemical tests for alkalinity and residual chlorine, learns and assists in regulating and adjusting chloridators and other chemical filters, washing filters, and settling basins, learns and assists in the preparation and maintenance of activity records and reports, learns and assists in sending monthly operating reports to the state and county, learns and assists in utilizing the SCADA system to monitor the village's water, performs increasingly responsible duties as assigned in the operation and maintenance of a water treatment plant. Uh, I know that might be something, all responsibilities, you think we might just cut that right out?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking general statement down to including the required knowledge.
I mean, just a suggestion, I mean, you leave it as is, and just advertising we just suggested.
Right, I'm, I'm gonna do like.
So, I put most in the ads, in the papers.
In the paper, I'm gonna do like the, the first paragraph and see what I can take in the last couple paragraphs and condense. Um, sometimes even just taking out a couple words in a sentence, I can, I can condense quite a bit that way.
Can't you just say, see the town hall?
Yes.
Job.
Right, that's yours.
For, yeah, that's why I wanna take out general statement of duties, responsibilities, and required knowledge, skills, and abilities. Those three paragraphs, out of the ad.
Okay.
Um, and then I was gonna cut the rest of it down, um, to bare bones.
Okay. So, then for the required knowledge, skills, and abilities includes familiarity with elementary principles of chemistry and general science, good general intelligence, good observation, mechanical and technological aptitude, ability to learn principles and procedures related to operation and maintenance of a water treatment plant, ability to develop skill in the operation and maintenance of pumps, valves, and related mechanical and technological equipment, ability to get along well with others, ability to understand and follow oral and written instructions, industry independence, tact and courtesy, good physical condition. Um, so you're thinking all three of those you would cut, right?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, uh, then.
They'll still be, this, this will still stay intact that people can pick up here.
Right, when they apply for applicants, correct.
Yes.
But for, as far as advertisement, we can cut that part. Um, but the other part to add is desire applicants have a valid class, CBL dash B, New York State driver's license to assist, uh, the village's street department. Uh, requirements include obtaining two A water license in six-month timeframe, obtaining water, or, excuse me, obtaining wastewater license within two-year timeframe, uh, pass civil service water training slash operator test when next test is available, uh, education, uh, graduation from high school, or possession of a New York State high school equivalency diploma. Uh, and then lastly, uh, salary starts off at fourteen dollars an hour.